Again, I'll call for disclosure of pecuniary interests in the general nature thereof. Seeing none, we're going to consider staff reports, of one of which is the ratification of the Staff Association Agreement 2020 to 2024. The council approved the terms of settlement between the City of Waterloo and the Staff Association, covering the period of January 1st, 2020 to December 31st, 2024. Councillor Veeth would like to move it. Councillor Hanmer would like to second it. All those in favor? That's all of us. Thank you, and congratulations, Tim, through to the team for your hard work on this and coming up with such an early agreement that's good for our staff. So, thank you. Now, we need to enact some bylaws. Moved by Councillor Henry. Seconded by Councillor Bonagar. All those in favor? That's all of us. Motion to adjourn. Moved by Councillor Freeman.
From staff and delegates to the afternoon meeting of Committee of the Whole, September 9th, 2019, disclosure of pecuniary interests in the general nature thereof from council. Seeing none. We need to approve some minutes from June 10th, 2019, from the Committee of the Whole meeting. Councillor Henry, Councillor Bodley, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. And we have one delegation today, and this regards snow removal on sidewalks of major corridors. I would like to welcome Mr. Mark Stapleton, a Waterloo resident, to the podium. Thank you and welcome, Mark.
Thank you. Winter is coming. I just had to throw that in there, Game of Thrones reference, but anyway, unfortunately it is, and I'm up here on behalf of a lot of the residents that live along the major corridors, the University Ave, the Columbia Street, King and Weaver. I am going to use my particular property as a example, but it does refer to other properties. So, I'm going to refer to my property at 349 Albert, which is this property here. Okay? So, I'm sure most of you have, throughout winters, have had the luck to clear the end of your driveway after a plow has gone by. Usually, it's no fun. It's even less fun when it's slushy and heavy, and but it's usually only associated with one, one lane of snow being plowed up onto your end of your driveway. If you refer to the map that I have, the aerial photo that I have brought for 349 Albert, you can see there's a left-turning lane that gets plowed onto a right lane, or left lane, sorry, then plowed onto a right lane, then plowed onto a significantly large bike lane, and then all that is plowed onto a zero-curb driveway. All right? So, again, going back to your, the end of your driveway, this is four times as much. But it's not only four times as much, because if you can see by the car here, that's one driveway. So, from here to there, you probably get about 10 in. So, it's 40 times as much. So, again, plowed over, plowed over, plowed over, plowed over, dumped on the sidewalk. So, 40 times is what maybe you guys have seen at the end of your own driveway. Then, to even add some more fun to it, this is probably one of the most highly-trafficed sidewalks for pedestrian traffic in the city. So, throw 1,000 people on there a day, and even the lightest fluffy snow is pounded into ice. All right? And then, just to cherry on top, let's throw a bus stop right there, which GRT is supposed to plow, but they never have, not once, not once that I've ever seen. So, we got four lanes being plowed up onto a sidewalk that is one of the most used in the city, and it's pounded into ice within 20 minutes. Then, the city comes along and says, "Oh, we don't like that," and they charge you 1,500 bucks. Last March, we got fined for 1,500 bucks, which is ridiculous. There is no way the cost of removing snow from that sidewalk is 1,500 bucks. The city is either abusing the residents, or the city is being abused by their contractors. Now, I was told there is a contractor that did it. The city has people and equipment. I'm not sure why they're contracting anything out, but regardless, if you were to use the city's number of $1,500 every time there's a significant snowfall, you're looking at a resident paying tens of thousands of dollars just to keep up on the sidewalk that the city has plowed four lanes onto. Maybe it's just me, but that doesn't seem right. Doesn't even come close. And then, just the whole situation of it, a blower with four lanes, like, I've tried to blow it. You can't. You need heavy-duty equipment, heavy-duty equipment. So, and this is not just this property. This is many, many properties. Also, too, when, you know, you come to the city, go, "Oh, there's costs involved, and we don't want to raise taxes and such." I don't know how there hasn't been a lawsuit already. Like, you can't plow four lanes of snow onto a sidewalk and cross your fingers and hope nobody does a slip and fall. And if the city thinks they're going to download the liability onto us, or on any residence along there, plowing four lanes of snow up on the sidewalk, I don't know any court in the world that's going to say, "Oh, okay, that's all right. You can do that." So, it's not like either the city doesn't have the equipment or the means to take care of this. I watch city plows out in the tundra, out in the fields, basically, in Beranger, plowing sidewalks that absolutely nobody's going to use all winter, or very, very, very few. And meanwhile, we have Columbia and University where the foot traffic is enormous. So, if it's maybe just getting the priorities straightened out, maybe if it is about the money, put up a "No Winter Maintenance" sign out there and move the equipment to where it is needed, where the people are. To plow out there, I just don't get it. And then, not to plow where you're putting four lanes of snow onto a sidewalk. Again, maybe it's just me, but I just don't get it. And then, there's the optics of it all. The city and the region go and spend a billion dollars on LRT, they keep pushing public transit, but they won't provide safe access to it. Like, let's start at the front, you know, not in the middle. It's like putting a horse before the cart here. You can't get to the bus stop. What good is having a billion-dollar train? So, it's a dangerous situation, and it's caused, it's not like I'm asking for every sidewalk out there to be done by the city. It's not snow falling down on it. It's four lanes of snow being plowed onto it. Totally different situation. And again, when it comes to the fines, the 1,500 bucks, the next 1,500 I spend will be going to a lawyer. Like, I'm not going to do this year after year after year after year. I don't, again, I already said, I don't understand anybody that would expect a resident to get rid of four lanes of snow. So, I'm asking the city to consider where there's multiple lanes being plowed up on zero sidewalk, or zero-curb sidewalks, to not even do a favor or anything, just kind of fix what you broke. Just clear your mess. It's not like we have, and last year, too, there was no salt. The only people that had salt was the city. You couldn't buy salt. The contractors didn't have salt. And you'd try to contract it out, it'd be thousands, like, but somewhere between 4,000 and 3,000, $3,000 or $4,000. So, that's not fair to residents along that corridor either. So, I'm asking the city to do what I feel is kind of a no-brainer and clean up their mess, and that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stapleton, for your comments and for your concern, and I feel your frustration. And I just want to comment about the Beranger Road sidewalk. My citizens live in that area, and there were, a couple years ago, they were up in arms because that sidewalk wasn't cleared all the time. And there's a lot of students, a lot of people that walk on Beranger Road to get over to the tech park and university. So, yeah, it's not, there's lots of, there are lots of issues and lots of places that need to be cleared out. So, anyway, thank you for that. Are there any questions for the delegate councillor? Mayor Jaworski?
Well, at the Regional, I am a councillor, and there's some regional things in here. I do think, and I'll ask staff to listen to this, I think the, there's different opportunities that are coming up right now. As you probably know, you've seen the regional cycling pilot that's going in, including on Columbia. I don't think it quite makes, it comes right around this corner. So, and I know in that, there's going to be some issues, well, not issues, there's going to be new ways of having to clean that. And I know the region has budgeted, I think, 300,000 for the cleaning of those areas. That might offer an opportunity to work with the region to figure out what they're going to be doing on those cycling lanes, and if it includes the ones that are on city streets or not. Bus stops, as you mentioned, regional responsibility, and certainly, that's something that we need to make sure that the region takes action on. I think all of us as councillors here, and even the regional councillors, have found many, many different spots that aren't done to certain satisfaction, happened to be a contractor in a different city who wasn't able to maintain it. Beranger and Keats Way and that, those are all backlotted. So, that means it is only our responsibility, and only our responsibility. So, that's the reason why you see the plows on Beranger. And then, finally, the province announced an audit and accountability fund, so that cities or municipalities could apply for money for special projects that we think we can really do a much better job on. And what we applied for and were successful for was for winter control. And so, we're going to be doing a study on winter control in the coming weeks, and we'll see where we'll be able to implement some of that. But I just wonder, maybe if staff could put that into what we study for winter control?
Mr. Rapp?
Certainly, through Chair Veeth, to Mayor Jaworski. That's correct. The timing of Mr. Stapleton's presentation is good. We are meeting with the consultants to do that study just this coming Thursday, to kick it off, with the goal of having recommendations, I won't say before the first snowfall, because that can happen probably when we're having leaves as well, but by the end of November. So, we'll see what recommendations come out of that study, whether it's policy, or whether it's route optimization, different things, but we will wait for that study. But we will mention this concern, if you will, to the consultants this coming Thursday. But staff are meeting with the consultants most of the day to kick this off. So, the timing is very good.
Because I do see what you're saying here, Mark, in terms of like, the snow load on the curb-facing sidewalk is certainly, certainly a burden to a number of people along there, but let's, I don't want to make comments on policies till we know what can be done or anything like that, but obviously, you've highlighted an issue that is obviously real. But thank you.
Councillor Henry?
Thank you, Mark, for coming in. I figure I should, I'm happy to speak up as your ward councillor on this, and also, I've heard from a number of residents along Columbia over the years, and I would say you don't even have it the worse. The folks on the north side, east of Hazel Street, where the retaining walls had to go in because of the grading changes, that would be worse. I think you would agree with me that that's, because now you have to, if you can't get snow, you have to get it up over something. And when there's lots of snow, which happens sometimes, it's really, really a pain point. So, I'll save my comments around here until our Transportation Master Plan Workshop. I think that's why you're well timed today, because we have to think about mobility across the whole city. And these are, these are issues and concerns that I know are top of mind for a number of folks, and we'll be engaging in a bigger conversation about all of this. But curb-facing sidewalks on major roads with high pedestrian volumes is obviously a concern and a challenge that we have to find a way to collectively manage as a city. And you've identified the pain points, the challenges, some of the push and pull has come through here. It's not easy to identify a solution that everybody will be happy with, but it's one we need to have a conversation about. So, thank you for raising it today and coming in.
Thank you. Councillor Vasek?
Thanks, through you, Chair Veeth. Thanks so much for your presentation. Snow clearing on sidewalks is a huge issue. My question might not be for you, but your presentation brought up a question for me that's something I just don't know yet as a newer councillor, is around, I'm not sure what backlotting means. So, are there any sidewalks that do get cleared in the wintertime residential, and why would they get cleared?
Mr. Dykstra, please.
Yeah, through the chair to the councillor. So, areas where we need to access our property, so anything parks, if they have a sidewalk in front of them, any of our rec. centers, so we're clearing those sidewalks. If we need to gain access to that park block, we'll enter the nearest driveway apron, so some residents will have us clear right in front of them, because we need to get to their, our address to clear it. So, that's under the scenario where we would clear various sidewalks through our adjacent property is owned by the city.
Okay. All right. Seeing no more questions. Thank you for coming.
All right, thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have, it says "none" under presentations. Consent motion, none. We do have a staff report, Region of Waterloo's draft Community Climate Adaptation Plan, IPPW 2019-015, and we have Robin McMullin. And are you, this is the delegation, Nicholas?
Yes, that's me.
Okay. So, we have Nicholas Cloet, Planning Coordinator, Climate Change, Regional Municipality of Waterloo. Welcome.
Thank you very much for having me. As you introduced me, my name is Nicholas Cloet. I'm the, I'm just going to raise this up, I'm the Planning Coordinator for Climate Change at the Region, and I'm here to present on the Community Scope Climate Change Adaptation Plan, which is currently in draft and available for public feedback right now. I'm also joined by, I'm also joined by Kate Hagerman, my manager, just to the side here. So, my presentation will cover why are we adapting to climate change, and why it's important to take a community-wide look at this, some of the stakeholders we engaged, and what project leadership looked like through the plan development stages, and what those were, some of the draft actions, and how those were organized in the draft plan, and our next steps for plan development. So...
Sorry, can you please raise the podium higher and get way closer to the microphone? I want to hear what you're saying, and I cannot hear you at all.
My apologies. So, with climate change affecting our community and expected to continue to do so, we're expecting to experience warmer average temperatures and more extreme heat events, more overall precipitation and more freezing rain as winters warm up, hovering around the zero-point more, as well as more large-scale heavy rainfalls and windstorms. And so, all of these changes in our climate are going to affect our community in different And so, municipalities across Canada are adapting to climate change due to the increases in risks that climate change poses to their operations and to their community members, as well as growing public concern over climate change. And so, mitigating climate change is also very important, and work is being done locally to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, but this plan focuses on the adaptation side, responding to the expected impacts of climate change. So, this, as I mentioned, is a community-wide plan. It addresses areas that are not under the jurisdiction of any single organization. So, for example, cooling and warming centers. Regional Waterloo Public Health organizes a working group that involves area municipalities, as well as community services organizations and other local groups to provide cooling and warming centers to the public, to people in need during extreme temperature events. And there are many other actions in this draft plan that will also require a coordinated or collaborative approach to being solved or addressed in our community. The community-wide plan also recognizes and complements the work that's being done already in our community to adapt to climate change. In particular, the cities of Cambridge, Kitcher, and Waterloo have developed and adopted corporate scope climate change adaptation plans for their operations and services and programs. And so, this is meant to complement those efforts. In terms of involving the community in this process, because it is a community-wide plan, we engage stakeholders in three primary ways. We had a core group of local experts and key stakeholders who participated throughout the process, and a community partners group. This involved staff from area municipalities, including City of Waterloo, as well as regional staff, community services organizations, representatives from the universities and college and agricultural sector, local experts on climate change and ecology, and many other stakeholders to sort of have a variety of perspectives. We also engaged local experts and stakeholders in other meetings and workshops if they could not participate in the community partners group, and we engaged members of the broader public. And this is a good opportunity to thank Robin McMullin and Richard Heftich, who participated at different stages through, our City of Waterloo staff, who participated in different stages of the development of this community-wide plan. So, with the help of our stakeholders, we went from an originally identified 40 impacts of climate change to Waterloo Region, and through vulnerability and risk assessments, prioritized 19 of those to be addressed with this adaptation plan. And now, then, there was a process of brainstorming and reviewing and refining ideas to, for how we could address those 19 impacts, and again, with the help of our stakeholders. And that resulted in 36 draft adaptation actions, which are in the current draft adaptation plan. The draft plan is organized in two parts. The first part covers some of the process, or how we came to this point, and in more detail than I've presented today. And part two covers the adaptation actions, all 36 of them. Those draft actions are in four, addressing four different impact areas. This is how they're organized. Health and community, built environment, natural environment and water, and energy and economy. And the actions presented on this slide are just some of the 36. And, yeah. So, in terms of next steps for this plan, as I mentioned, we're currently, we have the draft plan available to members of the public to provide feedback. There's an Engage WR survey, and we're also reaching out directly to previously engaged stakeholders, and we're giving more presentations like this one to area municipal councils. And we're doing that up until October 7th. That will give us time to finalize the planned content for November 5th, when we'll be bringing this back to a regional council for approval. And then, hopefully, with that approved, we'll begin implementation, beginning probably with reconvening the community partners group, which will continue to play a role in sort of leading the adaptation process forward in the coming years. So, thank you very much for the opportunity to present this draft plan. If you have any questions now, I'm available, as well as Robin and my manager Kate, to answer questions, or you can contact us afterwards at your leisure.
Thank you, Nicholas, for your presentation. I have a quick question. What was, what's been the uptake on the Engage Waterloo Region survey?
The last time I checked, we had three responses to the survey, as well as a much larger number of people who had accessed the draft documents, I think around 70-something. I don't remember the exact number.
Thank you. Councillor Bodley?
Through you, Chair Veeth. There are a couple of things that I thought were interesting in the report, and I'm looking for a comment on, so on number six, increasing the resiliency of some of our infrastructure, there was a comment about encouraging owners to keep storm drains clear of leaves. And I'm curious about whether the region has a comment about leaf collection from municipalities in general, and how that ties to that.
I'm not exactly sure if I can answer that question. I know that what we heard from, what we heard from stakeholders is that sometimes leaves can clog drains, and they might have a role to play in clearing them. What we can do, and I think this might be captured in that action, is encourage people to use their yard waste bags or other means of collecting their leaves. But my understanding is that leaf collection is the purview of the area municipalities, so we're not directing any changes to that.
Was, sorry, just to follow up on that through you, Chair Veeth, was there, I'm going to tie this to my next part of my question, which the other thing that was interesting to me from the report sort of ties into the previous delegation that we had in number seven, which was with respect to improving winter travel conditions for pedestrians. So, one of the suggestions in there was exploring the possibility of expanded municipal sidewalk clearing. Was there any suggestion under the previous one about removing leaf collection from the municipalities' purview?
I would have to check my notes on the original contributions of our stakeholders through the public survey and from our public forum and our community partners group. I'm not sure if that idea specifically was expressed or not.
Thank you. Leaf collection is very contentious in my world, but certainly falls under this purview. I mean, we should be composting, in my opinion, we should be composting our leaves. Councillor Vasek, did you have a question? Thank you.
Through you, Chair Veeth. Just in relation to this, only having three people having replied to the survey, so I think the community engagement you've done is amazing, and listing them exactly who's been involved to date is wonderful. And I'm just curious if there's any opportunities to go, like, classes, as the universities have just resumed, so I'm curious if any professors would let you come into the class to kind of pitch the survey, or even give some time during class to do the survey, so we can get some student perspectives, for example? Just a thought.
It's a good idea. I've presented last year on a different stage of the planning process to a class at UW. The professor was a member of our community partners group as well. So, I did reach out to her and all the community partners with the draft plan, but I think it makes a lot of sense to reach out to her again and see if she wouldn't mind sharing this with, they have a mailing list as well with students, so that would be a good opportunity. And if she wants me to present again, I will. But, yeah, thank you.
Councillor Hanmer, please.
Thank you, through you, Chair Veeth. It's the community health leader in me that has to ask this question, and it borders on the line of, "Don't reinvent the wheel if something's already out there." Specifically regarding Action 1.7, which is coming up with the vulnerable persons list or registry. And I'm just curious if you've had any of the agencies or organizations who already have these lists as part of your consultation, or if there's a plan to do so.
So, the, I can't remember her exact title, but she's a Community Emergency Management Coordinator for, with the region. Sandy Van Solms has a map like this started. It's an internal document meant to help emergency response, to guide them to certain neighborhoods, and to give them information on neighborhoods that they might be responding to, so if people have certain needs, they will be prepared. They're, they're working on making that a little bit more specific potentially. And I see my manager would like to say something.
Kate, come on, answer to my question. Come, Kate.
Yes, thank you, through you, Chair. I'm just noticing that several of the questions are in the same vein, and I think part of the questions may be because you don't have access to the full detailed plan. If you go onto the website, what you will see for each of the actions is a large chart that breaks down all of the stakeholders that are involved, the people we've talked to, the people who are around the planning table, what actions are already underway in the community, what... in the community, what resources are there, and what steps we'd like to take going forward. And so the plan really does recognize that we're midway, well underway in this process of adapting. There's a lot of people working towards this, and the overall plan is an umbrella plan that captures all of this good work. The region have facilitated this process, but we realize that this is not necessarily work that will fall on any one of our plates, but it is a shared collaborative process, both in, in the planning document and going forward.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to follow up.
Sure, go ahead.
Just to follow on, on, on that one. And what also struck me with this one, as I'm learning more about, especially in the City of Waterloo, the, the rollout of our neighborhood strategy, and whether, again, with identifying the vulnerable population, because you can do it through the formal systems if they happen to be involved, as you, as you well know, but then thinking if we're, if we're really pushing that whole responsibility of knowing your neighbor and looking out for your neighbor, this may be another message that could be going, going through. So thank you.
Yes, and thank you. That is, a second part of the action was a buddy system was recognized, and so the same, same messaging that we were hearing from our community stakeholders, that that would definitely be a need.
Thank you. And Counselor Bonagor?
Through you, Chair Vith. I'm just curious, when it comes to addressing climate change, I think combining mitigation and adaptation is essential, but any discussion of adaptation can sometimes be unwelcome or a bit controversial for people who, who just want to basically address everything now. So I'm just wondering what kind of feedback you're getting from stakeholders in the broader community when it comes to actually discussing adaptation?
So through some of our public surveys, there's been mostly positive response to addressing climate adaptation in a, in a direct way. We have heard from a few people that it either doesn't go far enough, or it needs to encompass more than, than our scope would allow us to, allow us to address. But yeah, I guess, not sure how to expand on my answer further. Maybe you can expand on your question.
Maybe, maybe I can, yeah. So do you find people are, I suppose, are they getting behind the idea of doing both in tandem? Is that the general consensus you're getting from the community?
I guess, yes. I think that there's, there's, there is a lot of enthusiasm or energy behind mitigation, and there's been a long history of pushing towards that with local groups. Climate change adaptation being somewhat, somewhat new. The, the stakeholders we've engaged so far have, as I said, expressed an interest in this, and in certain impacts that affect them personally, or, or that affect their, their friends or neighbors. And there are organizations that have expressed an interest in participating in one or more of the actions in the draft plan. My perspective might be a little bit limited in that I haven't seen a whole lot of them together discussing mitigation and adaptation at the same time. But I have heard that, you know, the co-benefits of adaptation, certain adaptation actions like planting trees or, or other initiatives, need to be expressed as, as part of this, as part of implementation, just so that that piece is not lost, even if we are focusing on adaptation.
Awesome, thank you. I see no more questions. So thank you very much for the report, and this is to be received as for information. Do I have someone to move that? Counselor Handner and Mayor Jaworski, thank you. Any questions or comments from counsel? Right? All in favor? Carrie, thank you very much. Lots of work yet to do, I guess, on that one. Okay, now counsel will be participating in a workshop regarding the transportation master plan and an update. So we have Chris Hodgson, who's going to lead us off here. Hello, Chris, and welcome.
Good afternoon, Counselor Vith. Members of counsel, thank you for this opportunity to bring a workshop on behalf of the Transportation Master Plan Project Team. So this kind of builds on the presentation to counsel back in June of this year, where we introduced the, the master plan, kind of what it does, what it is, what it isn't, et cetera, and what, kind of some of the things that we're looking at. I'd like to introduce two additional members of the project team, Mr. Gene Tartier from Paradigm Transportation Solutions. He's behind me. He'll be running part of the, this workshop, and he obviously presented back in June. Also, Susan Hall from Lura Consulting. They're the consultation specialists as part of the project team, and she will be mainly facilitating the workshop. And also, there's also Alter Planning and Design. They are specialists out of Ottawa. They're not here today, but they are fronting the active transportation component of the master plan. So just some, some objectives of the, of the workshop is to update counsel on the study progress to date. We started the, the study back in early part of this year, in January. To summarize some of the key findings and next steps for the public engagement program, and obtain your input on the aspects of complete streets and Vision Zero, as well as review the active transportation component of the master plan, and what we've seen to date, and where we're going. And also just to gain some feedback on the many, many subjects that actually the master plan touches on, some very broad areas, and maybe some more detailed ones. So here's a rough agenda. We appreciate your valued time, so we've kind of structured it to, and give you an overview of what's happened to date, and talk about what we've heard from the community, which will help us build into phase two of the work. This is, the engagement, I should say, is all about phase one, of course. And then we've allocated a large section to the workshop, and Gene will touch on that, and maybe just a slight tweaking of the information that was sent via memo. And then we'll close and do some next steps. And so I'd like to introduce Gene up to here. Just as an FYI, if we can get through all the questions, I know there's a lot of questions, and there may be questions that you'll have asked of us as well that we might not get time to. We are happy to take information via written afterwards. Would like to try and get everything done today, but that may not be possible, but what we'll do, we'll take that, and that will, of course, form part of the public document and the record to the master plan, which is a public document as it is under the Class EA process.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of counsel. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present before you again. Today's session is an outcome of our presentation from back in June, where there seemed to be quite a bit of interest amongst members of counsel in having input into the development of the transportation master plan, and we strongly support that, and it's, it's great to see, because not every community is, seems to be as interested amongst their members of counsel, but we're certainly glad to see that with you in terms of having the opportunity to come back and discuss some of these topics further. As Chris mentioned, we're sort of at an interesting point in the process. We've done our first round of community engagement. Susan Hall is going to talk a little bit about what we've heard to date. I'm going to concentrate more on the technical aspects of the transportation master plan update, but wanted to share with you a little bit about what we've heard to date. And we're sort of, as I said, at a critical junction of, we're just moving into now developing updates to the policies and procedures and directions that are going to be in the master plan. And there's a couple of key topic areas that we thought it would be useful to gain your feedback on at this point in time, which will help us better structure the document in coming forward. But thought we'd take just a few minutes just to review for members of counsel, transportation master plan, what it is, and sort of where we are with the process. So for those that may not recall, or need a little brief update, Transportation Master Plan is one of, one of the city's many strategic planning documents. It defines the policies, programs, and infrastructure investments required to meet the city's future transportation needs. The city's transportation master plan includes a vision for transportation for the City of Waterloo. We'll look at the city's existing system performance, check in where the city, how the city's transportation system is performing, vis a vis the previous transportation master plan that was completed in 2011. We will look out into the future, get an idea of what future demand looks like on the transportation network, and then based on that, come up with some actions and policies to adjust the identified needs, and help the municipality fulfill its vision in the transportation master plan. It's also important to recognize what the transportation master plan is not intended to cover. It really is more of, as we've mentioned, a strategic planning document aimed at looking out into the future, and it's not intended to address more minor projects, detailed operational issues, or items that are not affecting the long-term direction of the municipality. So I can give you a couple of examples, such as like a road reconstruction project, a traffic to control device change, such as an always-stop request, things like locations of new bus stops. Those won't be covered off in the transportation master plan. It also acknowledges, though, that the city has certain responsibilities and doesn't have certain areas of jurisdiction for its transportation, for the transportation system serving the municipality, specifically around the area of, of transit and school bus transportation, as an example, regional roads and traffic signals, active transportation facilities and crossings on those major roadways, and travel-wise, the, the region's transportation demand management program. It's not to suggest that the transportation master plan update is not going to address these items, it's just to make sure that everybody is, has a common understanding that there are certain things the city has responsibility for, and can have direct influence in terms of implementing, but there are other items the city doesn't have jurisdiction for. Now, in terms of the study goals, we set out three primary objectives to, to complete the transportation master plan update. So really, the goal of the study is to update the specific aspects of the, of the twenty-one, 2011 transportation master plan, to make sure that it reflects a multimodal transportation system for the City of Waterloo to the year 2041. We're also reflecting the directions of the recently, or the proposed amendments to the growth plan for the Greater Golden Horseshoe that came out earlier this year, and will eventually be reflected in the respective official plans of municipalities. And as with any sort of master planning process, it's an opportunity to begin the municipal class environmental assessment process for those projects that may be identified in the transportation master plan for implementation. So it's a much more holistic approach to looking at individual projects that will come out as recommendations at the end of the transportation master plan process. The plan is firmly rooted and connected to other overarching city documents and regional plans, most specifically the city's recently adopted strategic plan, the city's official plan, as well as the region of Waterloo's transportation master plan. So the, the city's transportation master plan will ensure that it reflects the direction and guidance that are provided in those overarching documents. Brief review of the study process and the timing of deliverables. So the, the terms of reference that were issued by the city for the study identified a three-phase process, very consistent with the class environmental assessment process, so that the two fit hand in glove. So we've completed, for the most part, phase one, a review of the transportation system today. It also gave us the opportunity to gather information, get a better understanding from the community and the stakeholders about what they view as some of the more urgent transportation issues going forward, and get their feedback at this point in time. We're now started into phase two, which has been called moving the system forward, and I like to refer to it as the session, section of the study where we do a lot of the heavy lifting. That's in terms of policy development, network review, all of the more detailed review of the city's transportation system, why, and why today is sort of so important in terms of being able to get your feedback, to help for, for items for us to consider as we move forward with phase two. And then finally, phase three is going to take us sort of towards later this year, into next year, into dealing with the future transportation opportunities. And that really has to do with the update of the plan itself, and getting feedback from stakeholders and counsel on the recommended directions that are presented in the plan. And as I noted in the, with that little yellow arrow, we're sort of at the beginning of phase two as we speak right now. We have done some, so as you can see, the date was May. We have done some phase two work already. We've started working on some of the, some of the documents and discussion papers, so it's not completely new, but we've more or less finished off the consultation process for phase one, which is now helping to influence the remainder of phase two. Just to give you an indication as to what's going to be covered off in phases two and three, sort of from a technical perspective, and we're going to talk about a few of these today, but it really, it really sets the stage for planning for a successful transportation system for the city. So we've identified, I'm not going to read them all, but as you can see, many of them are related to active transportation, and even the ones that don't have AT or cycling in the title have, are influenced, or will influence, active transportation in the community. So it's a pretty significant element moving forward, but it's not the only element of the plan, but it is a very important part as we go forward. So I'll turn it over to Susan to talk a little bit about the engagement program.
Thank you. As, as Gene had shown you, this is the project process, and we've highlighted the public engagement pieces that we've done, and the pieces that are coming up, in particular what we're focusing on. So as Gene mentioned, we've just wrapped up our first round of, of phase one consultation, and that was really to understand existing conditions, see what was top of mind for stakeholders that would help inform the transportation master plan update. Our second phase will focus on ideas for technical papers, looking at the draft vision, goals, and objectives, and then the third would really be that review of the draft plan itself. So we've taken an approach that uses a broad spectrum of different engagement tools. We're using your Engage Waterloo platform, which is great to have. There's a number of people who are already active on it, and an easier way to get people to participate. The city has also supported with social media and email mailing list. Through Engage Waterloo, we had an online survey. We chose to do pop-up events to try to reach a broader spectrum of, of people during the first phase. We'll be hosting public information centers in the second phase. We hosted a community stakeholder meeting in this first phase as well, that brought people together into more of a focused session, if you will, for a couple of hours, to talk through what was top of mind for them. Gene and his team have presented to advisory committees, and will continue to do that in the next phases coming up. And then Gene and his team are also hosting coordination meetings with the region, just to make sure that things are aligned where possible, and counsel presentations like this to you in each phase. So during the first phase, we tracked both the number of people reached and the number of people participating. So reached would be the people who came to a booth, talked to us, learned a little bit about the project, or visited the site but didn't give us any feedback, and then the number of participants were the people who actually did give us feedback. So we've got 245 individuals who have contributed their thoughts and ideas, and we have estimated that we've reached over 800 people through the process so far. And just to give you a snapshot of the key themes that we're hearing, one thing through the online survey, we asked people if they felt that transportation and getting around the city had improved since the last transportation plan, and they said that it has, so that's good news. But they did talk about increased safety for pedestrians, and making Waterloo more pedestrian-friendly, so we had quite a focus on, on people who were walking. Even in the survey respondents, it was a good mix of people driving, walking, and cycling. Traffic calming was mentioned sort of throughout the city. Winter sidewalk maintenance, as we heard earlier, is a priority and top of mind for people. There was a lot of support for the pathways, bike lanes, and trails, but looking at better crossings and some of the connection points for those. Cycling infrastructure that's safe for adults and children. We had a couple of participants who, who had young families or were attended with young families, and talked about the challenge of cycling with kids. families and talked about the challenge of cycling with kids in the city. We happened to be doing our engagement at the time of the LRT, so lots of excitement for that. And people said they are willing to leave their cars at home for active travel where they feel that they're safe and able to do so. One of the things that's always interesting is the understanding of what is a regional responsibility versus a city responsibility. So we had some feedback that really was more at the regional level than the city level and spent some time talking with folks about what would be within a city's transportation master plan. So from here, I highlighted it previously, but we're looking at public information centers, ongoing meetings with the region and a survey, a stakeholder meeting, returning to those advisory committee meetings, and then a council presentation would be in the, in the third phase. Jean?
I think maybe before we enter into the workshop portion, I would think it would be reasonable to entertain any immediate questions on sort of what you've heard so far, if there are any.
I was thinking the same thing. Thank you, Susan, for that. Are there any questions for Susan or Jean? Okay. Take it away.
Great, thank you very much. So what we've arranged for the next, oh, ninety some odd minutes, is a, hopefully a free-flowing discussion amongst members of council to provide us some input on a few specific topic areas. The briefing note that Chris had circulated to members of council was intended to give you a bit of a high-level overview of what we were planning to do. We recognized that there were a lot of questions in there. So what we're going to try to do is to sort of focus it down to three topic areas. We're going to show the questions again, but the intention really is to deal with them as a topic-by-topic area, given the fact that we have about a half an hour per topic to deal with, and if we do end up with time at the end of the session, we have some additional questions, dealing with things like new mobility, technology and mobility, public health and transportation. Should we get to those points? If we don't, we've offered the questions and we would be happy to receive any feedback that members of council have on those specific topic areas, if we do not happen to capture them today. As Chris mentioned earlier on, there will be a copy of the presentation that's provided, and we will be specifically asking for feedback if there are, if there is any from, from council on the specific topics. Our, our plan right now is I'm going to spend maybe the next five minutes or so just giving a very brief overview, again, of the three topics we've, we're looking for feedback on today. The first being complete streets, the second being Vision Zero, and the third being active transportation. And what I thought we would do is just spend a little bit of time sort of introducing for those folks who may not be as familiar with the topics, or folks that may be familiar just sort of where we're approaching it from, just so that we have a common understanding to begin the discussion. And then Sue will lead you through a discuss, through a question, question period that will deal with each of the individual topics, and we'll try to segment them so that we can keep a little bit of, of commonality to the discussion as opposed to jumping over the three different items. So we'll start with complete streets and just basically sort of give this very high-level overview of what a complete street is. And really, just in, in generality, it's a street that's for everyone, purposely designed and operated to allow safe access for all users. It's intended to be able to allow a variety of users to use the street. They're not just oriented to vehicles. They may not also be just oriented to pedestrians. There's, it'll fit the specific context. What we're trying to do, though, is leverage the potential for a street to support a variety of different uses and more diverse modal shares. So the city's official plan, all of the overarching regional documents are really trying to achieve less automobile use and greater use of other modes of transportation. So a complete street is intended to be able to make that happen. Typically, complete streets are dealt with from a, beginning with a policy level, but we need to make sure that we can translate that policy to some implementation strategies that alter decision-making in terms of the way in which streets are planned and designed, either constructed, operated and maintained. So one of the focuses that we'll be having through this process is trying to, to take the complete streets policy and bring it down to an operational level so that it, it gives staff good direction in terms of moving forward, and it ensures that it reflects the overarching policy direction. So just thought I would take an example here, just to see sort of how you go from a more commoner suburban street down to more of a complete street. And you can see that it takes a number of steps over time typically. It can happen in one project. What the idea is, is that it's the land use in built form and the entire street character change over time to something that is more in keeping with the use by a variety of different, of, of people and using different modes of transportation. Now, in terms of complete streets in Waterloo, this isn't, this isn't new ground that we're covering. The city really is a pioneering municipality, and I'm not just saying that because I'm standing before you today. You truly are a pioneering municipality in the area of complete streets. You've done a number of projects already. You've had a policy since 2011, and the existing policy says that you're aiming at streets that are economically viable, sustainable, vibrant, walkable, bicycle-friendly, age-friendly, accessible and diverse, and that's really quite a mouthful. But there has, though, been some evolution since the city's first complete streets policy wasn't, was, came into play through the 2011 transportation master plan. And what we're seeing now is that complete streets are evolving, continuing to evolve in response to new transport modes, on-demand mobility, such as, such as services like Uber or any of the apps that people have available, as well as the, the evolution and rapid integration of technology. And the way in which people interact with the streets are also changing. So what we see through this exercise is that the city is moving to what we're going to call complete streets 2.0. You've gone through complete streets 1.0. You've done a great job, but where do we go next? Where does the city go next with complete streets? The next topic we're going to talk about, and Sue's going to come back with the questions on the specific, but we'll cover these all off at the beginning, just so that we can continue the flow of the discussion. We'll talk a little bit about Vision Zero and, and the recently adopted city's strategic plan talks about Vision Zero plans and actions. So really, the idea of Vision Zero came from, came from Sweden. The idea is that you want to try to eliminate, or that you eliminate all traffic fatalities and severe injuries. And you do that by aiming to achieve safer streets through improved education, enforcement, engineering, evaluation and engagement. It's a systems approach to street consideration that's a little bit different than we've historically done in North America, where we try to treat symptoms of street problems as opposed to dealing with the root cause before it occurs. And there's sort of some key themes that you're going to hear anytime you talk about a complete streets, or sorry, a Vision Zero plan, program or tactics. There's going to be safe speeds, safe vehicles, safe roads and safe drivers. And there's certain elements that the city can influence greater than others. For example, safe vehicles. You don't have a lot of control over vehicle manufacturer, but you do have over speed and the safety of roads in terms of their design, things of that nature. So there's going to be different levels of impact the city may have on Vision Zero. What does it require for the city to be able to move forward with Vision Zero? Typically, there's some sort of leadership collaboration and accountability that goes into embracing Vision Zero as a, as a community and taking a leadership role. It's very much data-driven, so you need to understand the trends and the impacts of the various tactics that you may, it may apply to see if you're having a positive effect on safety. There needs to be equity and community engagement as part of the process to ensure that you're not doing something that adversely impacts one population at the benefit of another. Speed management is a very important fundamental of Vision Zero, as well as having a timeline for its implementation and achieving the objectives. Now, as I mentioned earlier on, in Waterloo, your strategic plan establishes safe, sustainable transportation as a goal, and one of the specific objectives under that goal is to adopt Vision Zero practices and tactics to enable safe travel by all modes of transportation within the city. So through the T M P update, we're going to look at ways in which we can help establish principles and components for a Vision Zero plan. Depending on sort of our discussion today, we'll see how far those tactics and, and actions go. We also want to be able to provide a safety foundation through the Vision Zero exercise for other, other elements of the plan that we're working on, such as complete streets. It's very much, they go hand in glove in terms of ensuring that complete streets helps promote Vision Zero and vice versa. Active transportation is very much dependent on what you do from a Vision Zero or a safety perspective, and some of the neighborhood traffic safety initiatives that may come out of the plan. For example, the discussion around the citywide 40 kilometer per hour speed limit falls squarely within the realm of Vision Zero typically in most communities. Finally, the, the area of the topic of active transportation. Again, city can be commended for its strong history of travel by active modes. You were the first mid-sized city in Ontario recognized as a gold bicycle-friendly community, and I know that that's quite an achievement, given the various, various items that go into getting recognized for that award. So what we're hoping to do through the T M P update is we're, again, the city has a long, strong history of active transportation, but I would argue that you're at a point now where you've done a lot of the lower-hanging fruit, a lot of the things that can be achieved. Now the more, some of the more difficult things, like the crossings of major roadways, like some of the awkward locations for being able to create connections, are where the city's going next. So what we're hoping to do through this exercise is expand the opportunities for walking, cycling and rolling within Waterloo through sort of the next level of active transportation. So I would argue that it's going to involve some more challenging initiatives, and as we heard through the public engagement to date, major street crossings tends to be one of the, one of the key issues that tends to be top of mind with residents in, in the So I'm going to turn this over to Susan now to lead you through the discussion, firstly on complete streets, and I'll be here if there are any technical questions, and if the, if the matter is more appropriately referred to city staff, we'll, we'll do that through the conversation.
Okay, great. So we had sent out in the memo some fairly detailed questions in advance, but we've rolled those up to make it simpler for our conversation today. So under complete streets, we'd like your perspectives on what is working well, what could be improved, and what role council could play to help move things forward.
Okay, council, I'm sure there'll be some questions and comments, answers for these questions. Who wants to start? Counselor Bonagor, thank you.
Thank you, Chair Beeth. Okay, to get, to get the ball rolling, I'm excited to see what's already percolating up in what you've presented today. For my ward, which is Ward Seven, this is one of the most important documents that I'm going to be working on, because I think the policies that we set through this are hopefully going to filter up to really address a lot of the concerns that I'm hearing across the ward. And, and primarily among them is, you know, roads are our most public, of public spaces, but right now, they don't feel like they are for everyone. And that's one of the main things I'm hearing from residents. And the exciting thing about this process is, you know, it's our chance to shift that balance. So when it comes to complete streets, I'm just going to answer the questions, if that's so. I'll start off with question one, because this is, I'm very literal, so I took notes exactly how you were asking the questions. I would have to say that you're, you're asking if it's working well now. I'm going to have to say somewhat.
Okay.
Overall, at least in my ward, that our streets and our approach to roads and traffic has not kept up with changing public expectations. Levels of service are a key issue here. They almost entirely seem to revolve around private vehicles and private vehicle flow. But if we want to really, really embrace complete streets, we need to pay attention to, you know, the safe access for all road users. And that will mean, you know, assessing our roads for much more than their impact on vehicular traffic, and it will require actually providing options to influence driver behavior. So in order to do that, I, I'm, from what I've seen, that may involve providing some additional pieces of policy framework that will thereby give our city engineers the parameters to take the steps that residents and cyclists and pedestrians and all vulnerable road users are calling for. I think the other thing that I'm hearing is, you know, we have a number of tools at our disposal. We have new tools that are coming down the pipeline, but what I'm hearing from residents is we're not seeing enough of them actually being used. So for on the ground, yes, we've set complete streets as a goal from the city, but on the ground, it still feels like car is king on every street. So this, this is the main thing. I'm just going to stop there and let everyone else weigh in on item one.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Bodley.
Thank you, through you, Chair Beeth. So I would agree with most, mostly with what Counselor Bonagor had, had said there. I think, I think the issue that, that I hear from residents is, when it comes to complete streets, is that there's, there's no equivalency between car, pedestrian and cyclist, although we're designing the roads now in perhaps a better, in, in perhaps a better way where there was no side, or putting sidewalks on a new street was not necessarily a policy, or having no, having cycling infrastructure, no cycling infrastructure on a street was, was, was possible to occur in previous times. Now they're there, which is good, but the equivalency is still pushed towards the, towards the car, and, and so the focus is, is still there. So I would agree with that. So my, my question, I, I guess, or one question I have as pertains to complete streets is, so underneath, it, within the strategic plan, under safe, sustainable transportation, we have the Vision Zero piece, and I'm really looking forward to that discussion here in a second. But the second, the second objective under the safe, sustainable transportation is to facilitate a modal shift. And so when you ask the question, what is working now or how well it could be improved, I would think that one of the things that we need to know is we need to have a K P I that identifies what the modal shift is today or was during, during the previous strategic plan, and how we're going to get, how we're going to set targets that get us to the, the type of modal shift that we're looking to get to under that second objective. So I'm wondering if, if we have any targets, K P Is, whether it comes to connectivity of cycling infrastructure, or kilometers of cycling infrastructure, or what our modal shift is today, sidewalks, et cetera. And maybe if I could get some feedback on that, that'd be great.
Certainly, through the chair. One of the things that we're actually working on right now is a multimodal level of service measure. So that's going to be an element of, of moving forward. As, as has been quite aptly pointed out, we've all traditionally focused on vehicular traffic for level of service. So a number of municipalities are now starting to evolve towards consideration of a multimodal level of service measure. And it, it, it's typically comprised or looked at as, by the individual modes, but there's a way to aggregate. So we're just working on actually that research as we speak right now of what that's going to entail, and so there'll be a recommendation as to how to implement that locally.
Just a very brief follow-up, if I could, through you, Chair Beeth. I, I, I think that's the key, because if you're asking me, is it working well? I, I mean, I can look at some streets and it looks like it's working well, and other streets, and maybe it doesn't look like it's working well, but unless we have that data to show us, when we're looking at this again, eight, 10, 12, 12 years from now, I don't, I don't know how we're going to be able to answer that question necessarily.
Yes, sorry, through you, Chair Beeth. Through the previous transportation master plan and along with this one, we, we embedded a task to look at the transportation tomorrow survey data, and we can break that down by the city of Waterloo and even down by ward, as far right down to cycling and walking percentage mode share. So we had that information from 2011, and we're assessing the 2016 survey data to compare where we are five years later, and we'll start to build on that for, for the future. We see probably the next TTS data being the most significant, because LRT would have been up and running, a lot more things in place. So the, those steps are in, in motion, and then we're starting to see a little bit of a pattern form in terms of, you know, that shift in mode.
Okay, thank you. Any more? Okay. Counselor Freeman, please.
Thank you, through you, Chair Beeth. In terms of what's working well, I, I, I'm not sure that the T M P necessarily, like it facilitated these things to happen, but I'm not sure that it directed them to happen. So kind of like what you were saying earlier, the T M P is not a construction program project, but it underscored the ability to create, I'm going to say, an active transportation highway through our Waterloo, and it, it positioned us to be ready to accept opportunities as they came along. So the opportunity with the region to designate pathways right now for a trial project for 18 months, it... 18 months, it positioned us to be prepared to move very quickly when the opportunity to create the spur line trail came along. It facilitated a nimble response to get a double pathway through Waterloo Park. And I think it helped facilitate some of the conversation that we're having in the community around what we want to target in terms of climate adaptation and mitigation. When the community comes back and says we want to target an 80% reduction, and recognising that transportation emissions make up a huge portion of that number, I think that the TMP facilitated some of those conversations. You know, in terms of what needs to be improved, that is going to be one of the improvements. Because at the end of all things, this community has said that we're going to have an 80% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions. And we need to be able to be prepared to model that in our TMP. So when councillor Bodley was talking about having, you know, a key performance indicator or something of that effect, what I heard at the Velo City Conference in Dublin was that the community of Helsinki, they set a target. They set a reduction target for emissions. And they agreed to it as a council. And then they kept going back and modifying the transportation plan until they could model that outcome. And, you know, that would be a very bold thing for us to do if we're going to commit to that. And, you know, because this plan is scheduled to go to 2041, and our 80% commitment's 2050. So, I mean, you can back calculate where you want to be if you assume a straight line, you know, at 2041. You know, as a councillor, I'm prepared to do that. I'm prepared to set a target, because that gets to the mode shift target in terms of saying this is our mode. And so that when we do take a three- or four-lane road, and we make it a single-lane road, or a two-lane road, or a 30-kilometre road, we can just say, here was the plan, this is all the consultation we did on it, and I appreciate that you sell cars for a living, but this is what the community told us. And, you know, I think that would be a very bold path to take. And I think that we, you know, one of the things that also could be improved is thinking a little bit differently about our TMP. And I had shared this with some staff, Chris was away at the time, and I really wanted to catch up with him. The other thing I heard in Dublin that I thought is very applicable to our TMP around this particular piece of building a street, what you said, purposely designed and operated to allow safe access for all users. And the thing that I heard that interested me the most was called healthy streets. And this was used in London, England. And so they didn't assess the street just based on whether or not it provided access to pedestrians, it provided access to motor vehicles, or autonomous vehicles, or, you know, bicycles, or electric scooters. It talked about whether or not, within a particular space, that the individuals who were the primary users, be it car users or transit users, they felt that it was a healthy space to be in. And I suspect that that could be a very interesting lens to use in particular areas of the city, particularly uptown, where people are seeking ways to more actively commute. We heard earlier today about winter control. And so if we looked at the street that was provided as an example, one would not declare that street to be a healthy street, because there's nothing to buffer a pedestrian user from the automobile traffic. And when we look at winter control again, and we see the bike lanes being primarily used as a loading zone for snow, not because the plough drivers want to, but because in some cases, they have to, or they feel that they have to. You know, that does not create a healthy environment either. So I think that those are some lenses that we need to think about when we look at complete streets, that it's not just complete, it's also healthy streets. And, you know, what role can council play? We can backstop you. And I think we really have to look, when we update our TMP, we also have to update our pedestrian, or whatever it's called. There's a, we have a policy around building sidewalks on both sides of the street that's external to the TMP. It's our, what's it called, Tim? Pedestrian Charter, right? Like, I think that charter needs to be fundamentally changed, so that it's speaking to either, it's an active transportation charter, or whatever. But we have to expand upon that, because we need to have those foundational elements that support staff when they say, yeah, every new subdivision we build is going to be built, the major thoroughfares are going to be built with on-road bike lanes, thanks for coming out, they're going to be marked no parking, and that's the way it's going to be. Because there has to be more than this, just this document that underscores these important pieces. And maybe it's a healthy streets charter, I don't know what it looks like, but I think that that's going to have to come with this.
Okay, so that's great, thank you. A few good lenses to think about with the TMP. Are there others on what's working, what could be improved? Mayor Jaworski, why don't you take a stab?
A lot of good thoughts here today. I think one that comes to my mind, I'm hearing from councillor Bonagor and others, is balancing the retrofits versus the new. New complete streets, you know, it's easy to do it the first time, retrofitting where there's demand. I think there's some sort of opportunity for balancing there. Complete streets, I think Waterloo's made lots of progress over the past 10 years. So in terms of answering the last question first, I think we've done very well, we need to continue on. One thing that I do notice when I'm cycling, though, I know at the roads level, we have a pavement quality index, and on our sidewalks, we do the once-every-12-months test for any heaving, but we don't do anything, I don't know, I know the staff have been doing a lot of patching lately in the bicycle lanes, but any sort of bicycle lane testing, is there any index of bicycle lane quality? Because I do notice when I'm cycling, is that what would be a small pothole on the road where I'm riding for a car is a big pothole for me. And so that might be something in terms of, just in terms of complete streets, making sure they're all up to some sort of expected level, particularly for vulnerable travellers. One that I see emerging is, as we put in these new, this new infrastructure, and we make it a complete street, is making sure we're not creating gaps. And I can't think of an example at the city level, but I do know one that's going to be active right now at the regional level, where we're going to be redoing Fisher Hall in north of Columbia. And it's going to have probably some multi-use trails or whatever. But unfortunately, the multi-use trail on the new section actually ends one block south of that. So eventually, we'll have this nice multi-use trail that goes from probably Keats Way all the way up and around to Northfield or something like that, but it's going to have this one gap from beach, wood dry, beach lawn, whatever. Yeah, up to just, it's a few hundred metre gap. And we're going to be creating a gap there, and it's on, again, on a regional road. But that's an example of where, when we do reconstruction, I think when we're putting in new facilities like active transportation, we have to let that reconstruction bleed out a bit, so that we're not creating gaps, maybe of hundreds of metres.
Thank you for that. Councillor Handmer?
Thank you. And thank you for the opportunity to have the input today. I must admit, as I was looking at the memo and how you put things together, I struggled looking at it in compartments, because to me, the overall is, we want to really have a very active city, so what does that mean? That means that any of our modes of transportation need to connect without gaps. And I'd echo the mayor's comment around the biking, or even walking, was probably one of the biggest things I've heard and continue to hear, that our transition points are not very well, either very well-marked, or very well-known of what happens. And we've got some gaps that need to be picked out. So I tend to look at the bigger picture. I agree with the complete streets, and I agree with the Vision Zero, that those are two principles and goals we should be trying to achieve regardless of what we're doing. And then the rollout of how that happens has to be the philosophy. But to me, the biggest piece is, it's the active transportation, multimodal throughout the city as our primary goal, and then how we do it depends on, again, whether it's new build, or whether it's reconstruction of some of the older areas. And I'm thinking, again, in councillor Bonagor's ward, in seven, it's a lot of expansion. And then in newer areas like mine, or councillor Bodley's, it's making sure people know what's planned, and it's just out there. I do like the concept of a healthy streets, like a code of conduct or something like that, that people are knowing upfront. I think we hear lots of times, that people just don't know what's happening in the roads, or what may happen when they're buying property. But I think overall, it's, the plan is going in the right direction, but if we could focus more on those intersection points, it would be good.
Thank you, councillor Henry.
Thank you, Chair Beeth, and thank you to the team. And I was glad to see some of your early slides on what's percolating up. It means that I don't feel like I'm shouting into, you know, some empty space. I'm speaking with folks that are engaged on the topics that we're thinking of, and I think that's really useful to know. On the questions you've got in front of us, what's working well now about the complete streets policy? I'd say that the complete streets policy is doing the job it's set out to do in the areas where it's been applied. And I think the challenges that you were speaking to, in terms of the feedback you were getting, and some of the disconnect in terms of what people are saying and what we're feeling, comes from the fact that the complete streets policy has been applied when we've done road reconstructions, or when we've done other major, you know, resurfacing or other works on streets that were identified, and the TMP is being priorities. But not most of the city, really at all. And so I think in terms of what could be improved, first, you've talked about complete streets 2.0, and we need to upgrade the vision, because the expectations have changed, Book 18 has come out, I think the public is moving in a direction towards more separation when things are at speed. And so we do things differently now on roads that we did 10 years ago, and that's something that is useful. But the other thing that we need to improve is, we need to think about what projects we include and how. We can't just look at the big-budget reconstructions. We've got to think about a programme that we're actively running on a lighter, quicker, cheaper basis that will bridge us the five, 10, 15 years before we can get around to rehabilitating the underground. We can talk about putting up a raised crosswalk, or putting snake-downs at an intersection, but if we've got a storm drain that relies on the road flowing in a particular way, we can't do that until we do the underground. But that doesn't mean we can't do anything. There are lighter, quicker options that we ought to think about, and we ought to do that as a matter of course, so people can see complete streets on their streets now, even if we're not able to build them fully for 15, 20 years. I think that will be significant. I think the other thing that we can improve on, when we go through the design process of these roads, just not on individual construction projects, but thinking about how we approach, when we are undertaking those projects and engaging the public, we spend a lot of time thinking about cross-sections between intersections, and we design those, we show people those, we talk about those, then we get to the intersection, everything disappears, and we don't know what's going to happen there, and we don't tell anybody about that. Intersections are front and centre, as you're hearing about, so when we do our REAs on these projects, intersections need to be front and centre. If we're designing ideal cross-sections on a policy basis for the TMP, we should be designing ideal intersections in the TMP. So we've got templates that roll out, and we can point to those too. I think that can be really helpful. The mayor's comments about project limits, and not looking at project limits as the end of a project, but trying to look beyond the edge of that project, and see what lighter, quicker, cheaper elements we might be able to do to connect those, and try to think about those differently. I know that's difficult for project managers to look outside of those very, very thick lines, but it's something that's really, really important. And in terms of the role council can play, I think councillor Freeman's spoken very well to having something to point out when people come at us angry about us doing the thing we said we would do. But the other thing that council needs to do is, when those opportunities come up, council needs to say no to opposition to the plan that it already adopted. It has to hold fast to the plan, and it has to agree at budget time to fund these things. Maybe over a period of time, but it has to agree to backstop them with funding, and to backstop them with support when that happens. And I'd just sort of say, by anecdote, one of the things that still sticks in my craw from eight years ago on council is, two months after approving the 2011 Transportation Master Plan, we had a subdivision completion for a cul-de-sac, which was looking to connect a simple pathway out from that, out to the main road, so people would avoid a 10-minute walk to get around to the bus stops and get around to the grocery stores. And that one was 4-4 around the table, and it failed. Two months after, we approved a transportation master plan that talked about connections. That one still sticks in my craw, and is a story that I tell whenever people ask about politics and planning, and how things work in a city. The positive story we took from that is, we started engaging what's now the WACAT committee as part of those processes. So someone would come to the podium and say, we should do our policy, rather than nobody coming to the podium and saying, we should do our policy. So that was a positive internal change that I know Phil and others helped shepherd through, so that we get the positive voices in the room. But I highlight that one as something that's really important for council to work on.
Thank you, councillor Henry. Councillor Basak?
Thanks, through you, Chair Beeth. Thanks for your presentation, and for all the engagement, everything everyone else said about thank-yous. Okay, good. I anecdotally feel like there's an increase in active transportation. I don't know if that's true, but it seems like it when I'm walking around town in various areas. So I think that is working well, in spite of, of course, people saying there should be more and better. Of course there should, I agree. I think that the city does a really great job of engaging with advocacy groups. I've heard that from advocacy groups, saying that this is, people listen, people engage in the conversations, and people respect who they're engaging with. And I think that that's really important. Okay, and now these are kind of like, I guess this is two. Okay, so I have three major thoughts. And one, the big one is around the strategic pillar of equity, inclusion and belonging. I think that should, that everything that goes into the Transportation Master Plan in addition to sustainability, because that's an easy one to filter everything through, I think everything should be filtered through equity as well. Because this is about vulnerable road and sidewalk users, and motorists. And so, one thing that I'd really like to understand, and this might already exist, is to better understand what motorists are costing the city. In terms of, for example, road reconstructions or development, how does that look like? One example would be, okay, developers are putting in parking, how much does the parking cost? How much is then downloaded on to the people who buy the apartments? Which also ties then into affordable housing, or the affordability of housing or social housing. And so I think that if we think about complete streets also as equity, we can think of various other things that come under them. Oh yeah, and another example would be like, the wealthier you are, the more affluent you are, the more number of cars you can have, which means the more strain you're putting on cars, or the bigger cars you can own, which is the more strain you're putting on the roads, I mean. And so, in some ways, people who may not be able to afford cars are in fact subsidising wealthy people who can afford these cars, or not even wealthy, just affluent people, you know, like white-collar, middle-class people. Yeah, sidewalks, no clearing in the wintertime, I think is a huge thing that we should be thinking about as a council, and what that looks like in terms of getting to places where vulnerable road and pedestrian users are going, for example, schools and daycares. Some places use a gender-based analysis for thinking about sidewalks, no clearing. We need to think about parking, parking being free. Why are we not charging for parking? I don't totally remember the answer to that. I do know that we've had conversations about that, so I'd like to talk about that more, perhaps have that addressed in here. Number two, working with other levels of government. So I know that, I was really glad when you talked about making clear whose responsibility is what, but I mean, we have, especially around the expressways, I don't know, is your company from town? I don't even know this.
Yes, we're based in Waterloo region.
Cool, okay. So like, you know where the Bridgeport entrance and exit is off the expressway? So that's Ward 5. That's the ward that I represent. And, I mean, that is just a shitshow. And so, and people feel like that, right? And it's also really challenging, because there are so many people involved. So how people feel is, you're just downloading this to hear, hear, hear. And it's not, everyone is really doing the job that they're meant to be doing, and working together. Like, I know that, because I've seen it and I've heard it, but it feels like no one's taking responsibility for it. Um, so I think it would be great to have the TMP really clearly outline the process for different levels of governments working together. Yeah. Including also then snow clearing at bus stops. And public transportation to the suburbs that also connects with affordability of housing. So this idea of the suburbanite, did you have something to say? I'm just going off. Okay? This idea of the suburbanization of poverty. So we know there's an affordable housing crisis happening in the city right now. People can't get on social housing. People can't afford to even buy a house. So people who, who can afford to buy a house have to go further and further into the suburbs where public transportation, uh, is less accessible and less off, less often accessible, um, and, and farther away from homes too. So I realize that public transportation isn't also our responsibility, but, um, I do think we have a role to play in that kind of collaboration. And I don't know what that looks like at a council level. Do we send motions to the region? Do we just have conversations? Do we just make Dave do it all because he sits on regional council? I don't know. So that's a big one. And then in terms of consultation, uh, I think it would be great, and I know it's onerous, but to allow for more public consultation on things like Twitter. So for example, put a question out and then just start a thread and, and, and analyze data that way, because there's a lot of really great data out there. I mean, sometimes it's mean and harsh and like, you're like, no one would ever talk to you like that in person. Okay, often. But I do think that there are a lot of people really talking about this in particular. And I found, I put out a question last weekend, a ton of people responded and almost none of them sent me an email, which is what I asked to have done. Um, but there's a lot of great data in there and so you can just copy the links from some places, somehow Twitter has stopped that, I think some other places, and send it along for an analysis. That's it.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you, Council Basak. Uh, Council Bonagor?
Um, thank you for letting me weigh in again. So I would just like to, uh, so I answered the first question, so I'm just going to say I, I'm, I'm really heartened. I was very curious to see what the different wards were going to make of this and it sounds like, um, we're all looking to this master plan to be doing a lot. So I, I don't envy you for where you're standing, um, but somewhere with that final, you know, what could be improved and what can we do to help move things forward? I think from my perspective, what could be improved for certain is, you know, being able to design our roads and set speeds, uh, in order to actually influence and dictate driver behavior. I think changing our levels of service, as I mentioned, would be great. And also I'm wondering if, I don't know if this is the, the document that would permit this, but potentially allowing temporary complete street installations to show what can be possible. If a road is not going to be redone for 10 or 20 years, could we maybe add some capacity to have maybe a parklet in a, in a, in a couple of parking spots? Just to show some examples and get people thinking about what's possible and what might be coming. I'd also like to see and to really echo the ideas of, you know, viewing this through an equity lens. So, uh, one thing I'd like to know is, are we engaging like user design and user experience specialists in creating and assessing this document? So it's, because they, they could give us, you know, a really broad lens to assess what we're proposing.
Through the chair, um, the simple answer to the question is no. We haven't specifically identified individuals on our team to perform that role. I have to give it some thought as to how best to accommodate or to respond to that. We do have specialists in active transportation working on our team that we can draw upon and in complete streets. So, but there's not such a user experience and maybe I'm not quite understanding the terminology correctly, but not from that perspective.
Is it possible to make a request to have that become, be included at some point in this process? I think when I'm speaking to residents, a lot of the issues that come up often come down to a failure of, of user design.
If I may, Madam Chair, through the counselor, um, our team includes our, our colleagues from Alta who specialize in active transportation, complete streets. They have a number of individuals that have a vast amount of experience in terms of the design of facilities. Um, so I think I understand a little bit better where you're, where you're getting at in terms of the question. Um, I'll put it to, to Kate Whitfield, who is our, who is our lead for Malta, uh, to identify an individual. They have a number of, of, of folks that have done, uh, a lot of design side of it. So I'll ask and see what we can find out.
That would be great because ultimately what we're trying to do with this entire thing is to improve the user experience for all modes, but specifically, specifically, I think the most vulnerable. All users, I mean, all road users, but specifically the most vulnerable. So I think user experience needs to be factored into what, what we're doing. Um, but with, with your council, with your question about what role could council play, um, I'm going to throw this to staff. I mean, council, we've, we were doing the master plan here, update. Uh, we've got a very clear strat plan that's been put forward. Uh, my question to you is, is what more would staff need of us to actually have this put into practice?
Through you, Chair Vith, to Council Bonagor. Uh, that's a loaded question. I think, and you've really caught me off here, is, um, first of all, we'd take more time to give a, a, a bigger response, but I think Counselor Henry hit the nail on the head, to be honest, with what, how, um, the council administration supports the broader plan. If I kind of look to previous strategic plans, which are our guiding doctrine and really do help staff, um, bring projects forward that align with that, but of course they are part of a, a broader plan anyway, sometimes there's a disconnect between motherhood statements and whether rubber hits the road. Um, we know some of you, uh, yourselves are going to go through just the, how to, um, convince residents to put a sidewalk across the, 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 the city frontage, uh, to take on-street parking away, to put a bike lane on. We've had these for a number of years and we've had some successes, we've had some failures. But where staff will always go, we're always pointing to the street strategic plan saying, "We're trying to implement the strategic plan, but, you know, some you win, some you lose." And that will always be. But where a lot of this is going, and maybe this will be the segue to Division Zero, is I believe a lot of cities in North America now are looking at all this stuff and they want that multimodal aspect. What they need to understand though, there's, it's a massive culture shift, not just by staff and transportation. It would be staff across the entire corporation. It will be other stakeholders. It will be, it's multifaceted. It's really, it, it's such a big thing that it will be our job to try and break that down and give council what that really means so that you under, you know, it, it'd be, when it comes to decisions, you'll know there will be the implications to that, but you're making the decisions for the reasons, do you want this to either move forward? So we, we can provide council many, many recommendations. It would be down to what you're willing to really, what you want out of it, to be able to support that moving forward. And I guess the other, the elephant in the room is the region of Waterloo and that's no, no disrespect, it's just that most of our major roadways interface with regional roads. And I believe, I recall Counselor Henry mentioning that in the June presentation. That's somewhere we need to somehow merge those so that even if we have some of the best plans on city streets where they interact with regional roads, how do we get that to, 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 to connect, to make that safe connection for, for the users? So there's a lot of things you can, you can do for some. I apologize, I was kind of running off, uh, running off my cuff there, but, um...
No, that's great. That's really helpful. Thank you.
That was very eloquent. Thank you. Counselor Freeman?
Well, you know, I think that that's helpful and, you know, this is intended to be an update to a 2011 plan and I'm sure it's budgeted that way too. And so I think in terms of what role council can play, I think we can look over at Mr. Anderson and say, "If you need more money to get this done right, this is probably the best place to come." So that's one way that we can help on this because at the end of all things, I'd like everyone to understand, in my opinion, the road, our transportation networks are the place in the space where people interact as a community. They are more important to me than the lobby of a condominium building. And we have a lot to say about what amenity spaces look like in condo buildings. And this is our singular largest public space that we own as a city. And in my opinion, we have to get this right. And we have to get it so that we can get to a point that when we get an application for a planning piece where somebody wants to put a bloody lay-by in the middle of Regina Street that is going to basically cut off both a pedestrian realm and a sidewalk realm, that staff feel empowered to say no. And that's what this plan needs to do. And that's what we need to do as a city. So when you asked me what role can we play, I think I heard we can set speeds. And yeah, that's going to cost money to put all new signs up because the province of Ontario will only let us put a freaking 50-kilometer sign at the side of the roads. Fine, we can pay for new signs and we can set a speed limit. And everything I heard in Europe is 40 is not low enough. And so I am looking for this plan to go beyond 40 and to look at global best practices on how low we need to go. So we can set speeds, we can approve the use of temporary installations and we can fund that. We can, we can actually model an outcome. So you can come to me with, I don't care, give me three outcomes that you can model, whether it's speed on interior roads at 30K and what that does in terms of backing up onto our major thoroughfares. Fine, bring that to me. Let me approve it. And if you need more money to do the modeling, bring that to me too. And if we want to set a KPI and a mode shift, a percent mode shift or, um, a, an emission reduction target that sees us at 80% by 2050 and that's going to cost more money to model, you bring that to me because I want to see it. And if it, and if we, if we, the user experience gets directly to the healthy streets and there's 10 components of healthy streets and it's all online, it's all accessible, if you need more money to bring a healthy streets expert onto this team, bring that to me. Because I'm sorry, but I actually believe this is the, one of the singular most important master plans that we have as a community. And I didn't realize how important it was in 2010. We spent six years doing an OP and one doing a TMP. So there's, that has to change and we need to get this right.
Thank you, Counsel Freeman. Thank you. Madam Chair, is there anything from your perspective?
Well, we have, I, just a couple of comments about, so I just want to say that we, the, the, I think we're heading, we're, we are heading in the right direction here. What's happened with the ION, with the new bus routes, I mean, there's still things to iron out, but I have to say, I traveled to Ottawa this past weekend on public transit from my house in the suburbs. So I got on a bus, I took the ION, I took Via Rail and whatever. So I just think that that's, that's kind of, that, I felt really great about that, that, you know, I was able to do that. Now, I'm, there are, uh, areas of the city that are not as connected, um, as I happen to be, but, um, anyway, I think, I think we're getting there and people just need to, there needs to be a whole mindset change. Because I tell you, when, last week, when the region put a few bicycle lane markings on a few of the streets, I heard from motori, like people that drive cars, you know, wow, yeah, yeah, they're waste, that's a waste of money and da, da, da. Anyway, so I just think people, and I, I, we'll get there. I mean, people are not going to stop buying cars, not going to stop driving cars, but, and it takes time to get through this stuff. As far as, uh, complete streets, I have one almost complete street in my ward called Lake Louise Boulevard that has, uh, you know, controversial roundabouts through it. Um, but I'll tell you, I ride my bike through all the, there all the time. The bike lanes are, they work, the roundabouts, in my opinion, work. Some of my residents... There's going to be, there's going to be, someone's going to be killed there. They, I keep hearing that. So anyway, I just, I, you know, again, to me, it's, it's about, um, changing attitudes and getting away from the whole, um, it's all about driving a car or a truck. So anyway, that's, those are my, my two cents.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Um, so we heard, uh, quite a bit about influencing behavior and speed, that there isn't equivalency between cars, pedestrians and cyclists, so that needs to be a lens, a number of lenses to think about, emissions reductions, healthy streets, equity and inclusion, um, making sure we're not creating gaps, thinking about the balance between new and retrofit and how to prioritize, uh, looking for some lighter, quicker, cheaper options and thinking about what can be done now, uh, with the long-term in mind. And then a few that were more specific around sidewalk clearing, around parking, around collaboration and process and around engaging community in different, potentially in different ways, um, and, and having that kind of buy-in. So I thank you for your time on complete streets. If, if I may, I'd like to switch to Vision Zero. We've got two more to do and about 40 minutes to do them in. Okay? So Vision Zero, slightly different, uh, questions. Um, so thinking about the possibility of Vision Zero as a key concept in the TMP update. Uh, what are the benefits? What concerns or barriers do you see? And then we've talked about the role that council can play. If it, maybe for that one, if it's anything different than what you've already said, let's, let's flag it, but if it's the same, um, areas, then we probably don't need to go over that again, just in the essence of time. So I'll turn the floor to you. Thank you. Who wants to start? Royce? Counselor Brodley?
Thank you, through your Chair Vith. Uh, I got a lot on Vision Zero here, so I'm going to focus on two things and see if everybody else gets everything else covered there. The two things I'm going to focus on are safe speeds, which we've touched on a little bit here, but every, I, to, to echo Counselor Freeman's point, everything that I'm reading from a data and a statistics perspective are saying that, uh, whether, whether it's cyclists or pedestrians, if there's no separation possible, that the, the only safe speed on the road is 30 kilometers an hour. And I know that that's, uh, a challenge on some of our streets, Columbia, for example, where we do not have separated infrastructure in element, on, on elements of it. Uh, and I'm sure there would be a significant uproar if we change that street to 30 kilometers an hour. However, other streets, uh, other neighborhood streets where we don't have segregated bike and bike infrastructure, uh, everything that I've read suggests that 30 kilometers an hour is the way to achieve that. Um, there was a 20-year time study in the UK that I read that, uh, showed that reducing the speed to 30 reduced the amount of casualties by 42%. So if we're talking about zero casualties, we have to get these percent reductions down. And, um, I've also read that a 10-kilometer reduction in the speed limit tends to lead to a 2-kilometer reduction in practice, um, for, uh, our streets. So if we can reduce all of our neighborhood streets from 50 to 30, uh, a, a negative reduction, yes, thank you, uh, down four kilometers, that would be significant. And for me, a lot of this comes to, and I, I don't mean to pick on our current plan, but I, I'm going to be critical of it for, for a moment because this is a lot of the requests that have come through to me. Uh, when we get a traffic calming request from a resident, whether it's a speed bump or a stop sign or, um, a raised pedestrian crossing or what have you, uh, our traffic calming plan essentially says that if cars are not traveling 10 kilometers over the limit at the 85th percentile, um, then we don't, essentially, we don't see that, that as a major concern. Um, there are other mitigating circumstances that sometimes come into play, I understand, but I'm going to use a specific, very specific example here that I have the data on in front of me. We did a traffic study earlier this year, uh, on Brandonburg, which is a neighborhood street and, uh, you, has a whole host of children who cross it to go to the school in the neighborhood. And there is no safe crossing anywhere on Brandonburg except Keatsway and Erbsville, which are really far apart from one another. And our traffic study shows that the 85th percentile in that street is 53.9 kilometers an hour. And we're saying that that's, that's okay. And we're saying that that's, that's okay. There's no way that it's okay for, to ask a child on a curved street in a neighborhood to cross the road with no pedestrian island at fif-, when the traveling speed of the street is 53.9 kilometers an hour. So I think this is the first step, in my opinion, from a safe speeds perspective. And the second thing that I want to talk about that ties into that is with respect to photo radar, which I know is something that we are, we are looking at and is being reviewed at the province, at the provincial level. Again, many of the things that I saw showed, the data that I saw showed that it consistently reduced injuries and fatalities, even when it moved around for up to three to six months after the implementation and removal of it, let alone when it's in place permanently. And I actually would like to see, I'm, I'm just going to share this because I thought it was really, really cool, when we talk about some of the backlash, or are there any roadblocks that we're going to see. I know with respect to photo radar, one of the things that I hear frequently is that it's just a cash grab. And there's, I, I, I didn't write down where it was, but there was a really interesting project where they did photo radar and essentially, if you were traveling under the speed limit, your license plate got entered into a draw to win the ticket money, which I thought was awesome. And would take away from the whole cash grab element of it. So I, I just wanted to, anyways, I just wanted to throw that out there, I thought that was really interesting.
Thank you for that. Counselor Freeman?
Through your chair, Vieth. In terms of concerns or barriers, I think that one of the biggest barrier is going to be us as a council staying the course on this one. And so I think that, I think that as a part of this TMP, again, there needs to be a, a council target in here in terms of what the council expectations are on this. For example, if we truly believe in Vision Zero, we don't approve any more freaking drive-throughs. Okay? There is nothing pedestrian-friendly about a drive-through. There's nothing even Vision Zero, okay, about a drive-through because at some point, someone's got to cross the bloody lane. And, and so I, I think we have to be thinking about that. We need to be thinking about these lay-bys that, that I spoke about. And, and, and we need to be back-stopping staff. So when staff bring a council report around a planning application for a drive-through, for example, that they will bring it to us and say, we don't support this. And this is why. They can point to our Vision Zero policies in our, our plan, identify, you know, how you can't use a roadway through a res-, you know, a retirement community as access to a Tim Hortons. And, and we'll uphold that position as a council. So that's, that's one thing. In terms of potential benefits, I think, I think one of the big benefits around this is that it will be a cornerstone piece. So when we make a decision around reducing speeds, if that's what we choose to do, this is the underscore for the reason why we're doing it. So that we're clear that this is not, this is not a conversation about cars versus cyclists. This is a conversation about building a community in where people live together and care about one another. As opposed to a community that sees our streets as, as small audubons. And, and that, you know, I think we've got to get this language right. Okay? Because otherwise, all we do is set up that continued argument of us versus them, and this is not what it's about at all. Because in that conversation, in every case, pedestrians get left out. And that, that is a, that, that, that's not where we want to go with this. So in terms of the potential benefits, again, I see it as a foundational piece that council can lean into as to why it is we've made decisions around, around elements and policies and tactics for Vision Zero. One of the concerns I have is around how we talk about it and how we, and how we, we, we implement these tools and barriers, or these tools and policies. And then I think, I think the biggest role we can play as a council is to have courage. Because it will take a tremendous amount of courage to see this through. And we can't expect staff to front our courage. We have to front that ourselves and we have to support staff in their decisions. We've seen Counselor Bodley, you know, take that on full force right now with regard to some bike lanes in his ward, and he has, he has supported staff in where that's gone. And we're going to have to do that too. And like, you know, we had a lot of stinkers come forward about putting, closing a sidewalk gap in Uptown. So, you know, the, those, those are going to be bold pieces that we're going to have to stand behind when this happens. I love what I see happening on King Street right now and watch somebody use the bike lane as a right turn lane, just would have lost it. But, you know, that's the thing, right? We need to stay the course. Davenport Road was just like Lake Louise, very hard to stay the course, but it, there's benefit in the end.
Thank you. Counselor Hamner?
Thank you very much, Chair Vieth. Oh, we're going around the horseshoe. No. Go for it, Mayor.
Okay, well, I thought we were just going around and back again. You know, quick, quickly, I think the, the biggest challenge is going to be setting expectations with those who are knowledgeable about Vision Zero, which is very, very few people, and where we want to go. And then in terms of bringing everybody else along. If you look at the term complete streets, which has been, you know, it's making it into language now, but I would still say the vast majority of people do not know what that is, never mind Vision Zero. So I think to, the comments we've heard here, the biggest thing is bringing people around to what it actually means and, and setting up a timeframe that we can all agree on at this council table of how fast to move. I think that'll be a challenge at the council side of how fast to move and where we can go with so much work to be done, either on retrofitting streets or existing new streets or how we play that out.
Now, Counselor Hamner?
Okay, thank you, through you. I do agree with many of the comments that my colleagues have, have made. I'm, I'm excited about this concept being part of our, our plan. I've got some worries about it too, and what continues to stick in my mind, and maybe because I am dealing a little bit with probably the most nightmarish roundabout in the whole city at Urban Ira Needles and the, the drive-through that just went, went in. And I don't know if it really is the policy or, or within the plan itself, but we're going to engineer things that work now, but we're looking at 2045, 2050. How do we deal with the changes, or if we've made a mistake, or if we've learned something different about how just the whole road itself or the street is, is engineered? And I don't know if we can be predictive about that or somehow put some guidance or policies around that. But I keep looking at that particular roundabout as an example and thinking, how can we blow it up and start all over again? And what would be different? So it could be some guidance around setbacks, it could be guidance around what's reasonable to go around in a roundabout. And also look at, again, some best practices from other, other jurisdictions because, who are much further ahead in an ongoing use of, of roundabouts, and I'm sure that's one piece. I think as council, we have a real responsibility, as, as has been said by many, to stay the course. Once we make a decision on a direction that we want to be going, it should be influenced in each and every one of our, our practices and the decisions and not be making exemptions along the way. And the education component, I think as ambassadors, is going to be important for us too. So I always think of things of how we're communicating and soundbites of, okay, what does this mean? How do we go through it? What's the process? So I think we're going to need equally from staff, the feeding of what it is that we're talking about so that we can be reinforcing and, and supporting staff in decisions.
Thank you. Counselor Henry?
Thank you, Chair Vieth. Lots have been said, so I think I'll just focus here on, on a couple of things. The benefits are obvious, people not dying or being seriously injured is good. And, and our practices should reflect the fact that isn't just good, it is incredibly good. There is, there is not a waiting scheme where that gets 20 points out of 100 and it sort of waits out as, as, as not a whole lot. And I speak specifically to, I was glad to hear that you're looking at, at a new LOS, you know, model, Level of Service model that considers, you know, multimodal transportation. I hope when you're, you're looking at that, you think also about comfort and safety and not just sort of weighting the average and, and getting the result, because that's the connection to Division Zero. And, and quite frankly, me, me standing out, you know, an extra 15 seconds waiting for a left, a long left turn signal out in the freezing or snowing rain, while the drivers are concerned that they might sit at the intersection, extra 10 seconds in the comfort of their car, does not make me warm and fuzzy inside, and nor does it encourage people to, to make that move too. So I, I'd say the benefits are, are obvious and large. The concerns or barriers are the ones that have been mentioned, but also any policies and practices that privilege, you know, level of service or, or car comfort and throughput ahead of, of life and limb. Because we do that every day when we're designing these things and we, we cannot. And, and the other concerns or barriers that, you know, Chris has, has spoken to and we all know about is, we can do the best Vision Zeroing we can on city-owned streets and there will be people continuing to get seriously injured or, or die on roads in the city of Waterloo because they are regional roads and we do not control those things. So I think that there is, there is some alignment challenges we have to work on. What role could council play to help move things forward? In addition to staying the course, we have to recognize that the responsibility of this and the challenge of this that we need to support will not lie on municipal enforcement shoulders, it will not lie on communication shoulders, it relies on transportation and engineering's shoulders, because design is where the rubber hits the road, far more than enforcement and education ever will. And, and we need to recognize and support and privilege in terms of resources, time and thought and comments, where we can actually achieve this in terms of the five Es, on the Es that really make, make this, make the difference.
Thank you. And Counselor Vasik?
Thanks, thanks through you, Chair Vieth. I don't think I have any swearing coming, but you know, I start getting talking and I get more and more enthusiastic about making, you know, the community better. I think a big benefit of this, it does revolve around the messaging and the, and the education, especially around younger generations. We have the opportunity to educate young kids about what it means to live in a community that is safe and where you can get outside and where you can travel in any way you want. And kids love biking and they love running. And so I think we have an opportunity here to make the messaging clear to younger generations as well and younger families, even if that means communicating it in ways where we don't use the language Vision Zero or Complete Streets. I mean, throughout this presentation, I've been going back to the definitions because I don't even clearly understand what they mean, right? And that's not a testament to whether you've done a good job explaining them, you have, but I have to go back and read that, right? And the barriers and concerns, I would definitely echo the regional pieces and particularly this safe, or I'm curious what safe distances are between intersections, because that's similar to the spot I was referring to before, right? The safest spot to cross is either Margaret or Lancaster in Kitchener. There's actually no way to get across the streets in between there and the speeds are high, teenagers get a lot off there for school. And in, like anecdotally, people say, people are speeding up to get onto the expressway and these teenagers are playing chicken to get across, but they're probably not also thinking that the cars are speeding up at the same time where they're trying to race them across the road, right? And, I mean, you could blame teenagers for it, but I don't know, I like, I think that's a pretty common thing that many teenagers play, so I think it's going to continue in perpetuity. So we need to be thinking about that. Another thing I hear often from people is, yeah, of course I want you to reduce the speeds, but where's the enforcement going to be? And I think that that's a huge one and I don't know how we address it, it's another regional piece, but I think people aren't going to buy into the idea and we're, I agree we need to sell it as a council and we need to stick behind it, but people, we can say it and people aren't going to believe it if they don't actually think enforcement is going to happen. Sorry. Oh, I think that thinking about school zones in the Vision Zero discussion would be really important. I'm not exactly sure what that means or what it looks like, but I don't know if we're going to reduce traffic speeds even more there. I don't know if you just close off those streets to cars. There are some examples in Edinburgh where they've completely closed off school streets so people have to walk, which is something the schools are trying to encourage anyways. And I know for a fact, because we go by schools on our way, that that doesn't happen. People are strapped for time, they have to drive their kids. So how do we facilitate that couple block walk? And the other thing that, this will also relate to active transportation, is this bollards being like, I want real protected bike lanes. And I love what the city is doing so far, I think, and the region. I think there's been lots of strides, like you've been mentioning, but I, on those, they've put some bollards up in Kitchener and people are really supporting them, some of the cycling ads, it's on, on the internet. I wouldn't ride with them and my kid. They're flexible bollards and I have a four-year-old. If he sees an ant, he just swerves to see the ant. So, so I'll just go right out into traffic. So I'd like to think about what protected bike lanes really mean for all users, including families or, or maybe older adults who want to bike but are a little bit unsure of their balance, for example. And I think what council could do, and I think this relates to a lot, is support the development of a youth engagement strategy, because I think youth can be both ambassadors, they can be consultants, and then we'll start to think of the city through the lens of youth as well.
Thank you. And Counselor Banagar?
Through you, Chair Vieth, thank you. And I, I think the potential benefits are very well explained. I mean, they're, they're endless, really. So I'm going to focus more on, on the other points there. So I think one of the main roadblocks we're up against is really that, you know, society continues to make allowances for illegal driving behaviors, like speeding, running Ambers, rolling through stop signs, like these, we see them all the time. So I think, you know, and it comes, again, with Counselor Bodley's comments, you know, acceptable speeds are entirely unacceptable. The intersection control plan, because I did a lot of reading this weekend, I can tell you it cautions against stop signs because they cause inconvenience to motorists. And they're flagged as being not safe for pedestrians because pedestrians actually expect the drivers to stop. So we're dra-, we're designing our roads to enable bad, illegal driving behavior. So I think this is where Vision Zero can really have an impact. But, you know, and we, because we need to put people first. And this uses design to clearly put our most vulnerable road users first, which is great. Two big things come up though. I mean, this needs enforcement, obviously. Design is lovely, but we actually need to make sure people are stopping at the stop signs, are doing the things they're meant to be doing. But also, you know, at, the region is a big part of this. And I'm just curious, you know, at, at what point can we require the region to abide by our strategic plans and our city plans? I mean, I would like us to potentially lobby for some kind of change so that our goals as a city can be carried out on city and regional roads. That's, that's extraneous to the TMP, but it's something that's part of it. And one thing I'd like clarification on, so on slide 25, I think it was, where you're outlining Vision Zero, I just want to clarify what you mean by, you know, improved education. Because from my understanding and from my background reading, Vision Zero, it makes, it, design is the, is the point. And it places responsibility for people's safety on the system itself. It doesn't have kind of education campaigns that, you know, we sometimes see, which kind of, you know, allocate blame where maybe blame's not warranted. So I'm just curious what you mean by that piece.
Through the chair, to Counselor. It's all part of the communication around the concept of Vision Zero. So it's informing road users of all types that, about the approach, about what's happening. So it's more of an education, not so much from the perspective of trying to say, you know, you slow down, you stop looking at your cell phone, those sorts of things. It, it's all part of an overall program or strategy that's intended to help people better understand their own consequences, their own actions, as well as explain what the municipality is trying to accomplish through its Vision Zero initiative. So it's not per se like a wholehearted education campaigns that you may have seen in the past, but, but there are some very novel and intriguing examples that I have seen from, from Europe in terms of some of the education tools that they're using to make people aware of, of safety and road safety. So I, I think there's, there's a, there's an element of it, but it's not sort of the traditional one.
I'm looking forward to seeing that. Just, because the reason that caught my eye was, you know, we've seen some public education campaigns that are essentially saying, you know, safety is everyone's responsibility, but someone with 300, you know, 3,000 pounds of steel has a very different obligation in terms of public safety than someone who's pushing a stroller. So that's why I'm, I'm glad to see that you're looking more education as a kind of why we're doing this, that, that, I'd like to see that, that's great.
Thank you. Maybe we could go on to the next.
Sure, sounds good.
Transportation. Transportation.
Whoops, so the next one's the active transportation, so similar questions, what's working well, what could be improved, and if there's anything new for the role of council from this one? We've heard a few points, I think active transportation's been woven through our conversation about the focus on an active city being the ultimate goal, and how do we support that, looking at multimodal, that balance with cycling pedestrian pieces, and just even the last piece around protective bike lanes, so if there's, oh, and one more?
Yeah, just to add one more comment, and part of the reason why we pulled this one out separately, because I think, you know, as you've all, I think, mentioned quite articulately, the complete streets and visions zero are really fundamental, sort of foundational pieces, and this is more sort of an implementation, but I think what we're interested in hearing is, is the city has, you know, 10-plus years now of experience in implementing active transportation, and there aren't a lot of municipalities that we work with that actually have as much experience, so I think this is now sort of next level, and I think there are some very concrete examples and situations that I think what we're hoping to garner at this point is, you know, not just, oh, we're doing okay, all that kind of stuff, but are there specific examples that you're seeing that we should be taking into consideration as we go through?
Okay, thank you. I'm going to start with councillor Henry this time.
Thank you. I think on that question, and then I'll broaden it, I think the last several years in Waterloo, we've been focused more on the stake than on the sizzle in terms of what we're trying to deliver. And by that, I mean, our active transportation committees have worked with staff very closely to help focus our goals on the highest priority network, connecting that and plugging those gaps, you know, drawing those lines, creating the Waterloo, prioritizing the Trans Canada Trail or whatever the heck it's getting called now, and really building out those priority networks, identifying the gaps, and just plugging away at them until we have some infrastructure that can really move people. We've got some gaps on major roadway crossings, we've got a couple of gaps left that we need some private development negotiation done, but that focused effort has meant that a citywide network, including a couple of crossings of an MTO highway, are there, and they've been done. So I think that hasn't been about sending out press releases because we have new bike racks that look like bicycles in our downtown, it's about really focusing on moving people and connecting the networks. I think that's worked really well, of focusing on the stake and not the sizzle. In terms of places where I think we can keep, you know, moving forward and improve some of that, one is on some language, I mean, the region's talking about the separated cycling pilot, you listen to councillor Galloway and others, he doesn't see it as a pilot, he sees it as something that they're doing, but they're testing what works best and how we'll maintain it and all those different technical questions. And what I heard at, you know, some enacto training session that I did last year at FCM, was the language that we really mean here is, it's an interim design, not a pilot project, it's an interim design, we are doing it, we just don't know how best to do it. So we're trying some stuff, we'll get some stuff wrong, tell us what the pain points are, we'll fix it. And I think if we start with interim solutions rather than pilots, we tell a different story about what we're doing, we collect different data than what we're doing, we exclude different perspectives that are in the way of doing it, we're going to do it, the question is how, how do we make this work best for you? And I think that helps frame the subsequent public engagement pieces, and that really stuck out to me as something that would be positive. One of the other things that I think we need to do, and this is all connected in council support, we have, when we look at our official plan and in our TMP, a hierarchy of the road network, all right? You've got the major arterial roads, some minor major collectors, yada yada, we've got a very clear priority. Do we have the same priority network on our active transportation systems from trails and separated networks and sidewalks? Have we prioritized that? Probably have not, this plan should. And if we have a prioritized active transportation network, we ought to have implementing policies around how those are maintained year-round and what kinds of tools we have. I don't want to decide the conversation, that will be a difficult one, about who does what in the winter, but I think having policy tools that identify what the priorities are open up some conversations about how we might achieve those if we start from a set of goals and recognize where we've got gaps on meeting them and what might work best. I think we heard an example of what could be a priority today versus some other things, and I know there's other perspectives on that. So I think that's the high-level frame for this, and I think as we think about that priority network, this is interacting with partners, we know that STS and the school boards are really interested in safe routes to school, and that they're clearly an engaged party in trying to identify a priority, a priority network. And if it takes us time to get that right, that that's one of the first things we'll do after approving a TMP, is finish that part of the work, because it follows on out of scope, that makes sense to me too, but I leave it to staff for the sequencing that makes sense in the scope of work that you've got ahead of you.
Thank you. Councillor Haner?
Thank you. Through you, councillor Henry's very eloquently stated a number of things that I was thinking about, and so I think that's wonderful. Being new to council and so going from the perspective of when I was campaigning, and especially in my particular area, the big things around the active transportation, everyone loves it, but it's the connections, as we talked before, and the transitions from, if you're on one of the bike trails or if you're on one of the walking trails, all of a sudden you end up at a road, at a major intersection, and it's not easily or safe to transition from one to the next. And I think we've got the opportunity too, to do a little bit more with the school boards and the walking and really encouraging it at the younger years, so the transitions really do need to make sense, and how do we take advantage of some of the initiatives that other partners might be coming up with? And I think of, as I watch the walking school buses, and just the barriers or the challenges that some of those may have crossing some of our regional roads, in my case, to get to the school, so thinking of that. This one, to me, also is a place where we really need to stay the course. If we have a goal of being a fully active city with many different ways that you can get around, we need to be able to say, okay, how does this fit? How does this link with our transportation? So whether it's policies that we need or practices that we need to be putting in place, to me, that all should be coming out of part of the plan. And then I'd like to see some evaluation too, so what indicators, what difference are we making? Have we moved the needle on people taking non-motorized vehicles to get places, and what difference has that actually made in our city, and how does that link with some of the other components of a really healthy city? Thanks.
Mayor Jaworski, do you have some comments?
Thank you, through the chair. I think the, a year ago I talked about the concept of super trails, but I think councillor Henry's idea is the real meat is to have a prioritization of a network, of a transportation network, and then also continue on as we've been doing on gaps, signage, those make such big differences, accessibility, so proper curb cuts, and I know we continue to work on that, I think those are key. Four-season is the way we want to think, I think, at this council table, and really think that's about, let's put it, I think we'll hear more.
Thank you. We'll finish out this side. Councillor Vasik?
Thanks through you councillor Vith. Yeah, like the priority network too, I mean, things I hear are people just don't even, their roots are so disjointed, right? Sometimes they take the side, they, I mean, so do I, because I have my kid on my bike, sometimes they take the sidewalk, sometimes I take the road, it just depends where I am. I would never bike on Bridgeport with my kid on my back, again, a regional road, but you know, you get the idea, these busy roads. So then I'll go on the sidewalk, but there's also this sort of debate between people who walk and people who take bikes, should bikes even be on the sidewalk? But I don't feel safe at all on the road with my kid, but we want to use active transportation. But I get that somebody who's a more vulnerable pedestrian user, pedestrian, has the absolute right of way, and while I'm not a car, I could do damage if I hit them, so I really appreciate that too. So thinking through, how do we enable those healthy and safe spaces so that, so that they're, that everyone sort of feels like they can go where they're supposed to go, right? And I know this is regional too, but in terms of how do we enact change at the region? I mean, there are people advocating for free transit, and I don't pretend to believe that the region has the ability to provide it to anyone, I know they're also under major financial constraints, but I think that that would make a huge difference, free transit transit more often to outside neighborhoods. I also appreciate your comment councillor Henry about the language, and someone reached out to me last week saying we need to, in terms of Bridgeport being proposed to have a road diet, so thinking about it differently, it's not a road diet because it implies that you're taking something away, but rather you're actually right sizing, this person said, and that really stuck out to me, you better distribute space so that everyone gets the space that they need, and that might mean road congestion, but that's okay. I think that's it, and then the bollards, what I said before, so what do protected, protected infrastructure look like, and not to take away from the great lanes that are uptown, I'm really excited about them too, but I'd love them to be even more protected.
Thank you. Councillor Bonagor?
I'm going to support everything I've heard over there, so basically, I think, you know, what's working well, the trails are really getting better, but connections, signage and crossings are still problematic, sidewalk infill, like that's, that program's doing really well, and it's already had an impact in parts of Ward Seven, I think we really need to keep that up. And I'm looking forward to the results of the bike lanes, the segregated bike lanes, and the winter maintenance reports, I'm looking forward to all of this coming through. But I think with active transportation in particular, this is another great opportunity for us to have user design and user experience specialists involved. So often we have great plans, but they fall down at the last hurdle, so we're getting like 85 to 90% of the way there, but then there's no sign telling me where the trail picks up next. So it's those user design elements that will really heavily influence whether people will take part and will switch modes, because we need to make it, we need to make it safe and easy so that people can switch if and when it fits their daily needs. And just to get touch on what councillor Vasik was just saying, I'm one of the people who's advocating for some free transit, but I would just like us to even just be, like the region, to be looking at free transit for children, I think people 12 and under, again, not part of this, but it came up, so that's one thing I'd also like to see.
Thank you. Councillor Bodley?
Okay.
Just so I'm not the only one who doesn't say anything.
A lot.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. I'm just fully supportive of everything that's been said here. I think one of the things, I am a very limited cycling user, I just started cycling this summer, and I think where this, one of the things I would like to see, I guess, focused on, and I haven't reviewed it entirely, so I don't know that it's there or not, is I know there's the whole first mile, transit last mile approach to this, and I'd like to see the active transportation element of it really, like from my perspective, focused on that, so in particular around major station areas, like if you live within a mile of a major station, of an LRT stop, it should be super easy to connect to that LRT stop, not just the broad trails that span multiple kilometers, which are awesome and great, and I think are a great way for us to encourage that, but when we focus on the first mile, last mile element, it should, we should really be looking at those major station areas, and I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you. And councillor Freeman?
Thank you. So in terms of what's working well, I think one of the other pieces that is working well is that we're collecting data. We are getting real-time user data, who's where, where, who's using what trails. In every case when we've applied for funding, those user data numbers have been instrumental, and I think we can do a lot more. So I know that I shared with staff about some special bike lights that are made in the UK that collect pavement quality index within the bike lane, but they also say where people are riding, so if they don't feel safe and they're riding on the sidewalk, that data is going to identify that for us. And so I think that there's a lot of really innovative things going on within the data collection realm that is going to really help inform prioritizing active transportation corridors, where people are actually riding right now and where they want to ride and how they want to approach those spaces. So I think that that's going to be a big improvement piece that we want to continue to grow. And I also think that we want to be positioned through this TMP to make decisions moving forward year to year based on data, so that we actually have quality information, we're not just saying, oh, you know, let's pick this road because we think we should, kind of thing, but we've got really good data to advance that. In terms of the role council can play, not only do we have to get language right around things like right sizing the roads, and wherever road diet came from, I'd like to crucify that individual, because it's just such a useless term, and the transportation engineers at the region, I think I like to make up shirts for them that remind them to use right sizing roads. But one of the things around this is that when we do make changes associated with active transportation, we need to be well-prepared on a communications front to demonstrate how it is that all the road users benefit from it. And, you know, that was a very critical piece that we failed to get out well around Lexington Road, because when we made the change on Lexington Road, over the bridge and made that active transportation corridor link, we actually improved safety on that road by putting in dedicated left turns at Lexington Court and Davenport Road. And what we did was we actually modified the flow of traffic so that it flowed more directly and more succinctly. So I think we have to be prepared to do that and be able to explain to people, you know, and, you know, people tell me all the time, you built that bike lane, I never see a cyclist on it. Well, you know what, I built a cul-de-sac and I see 10 cars on it, ever. So the cul-de-sac cost me a ton more than that bike lane. So, you know, it's things like that, I think we've got to get ourselves in that right frame of mind, not to create a competition for space, but to actually help people see how it is that we as a council think about these things and how it is we find balance. I like the way that the mayor said, finding balance in terms of demonstrating decision-making around active transportation. I think each time we make decisions, we have to be prepared to answer all of those questions.
Thank you. I really can't add too much to that, I think, as to what role council can play, I think individually, we can all be advocates for active transportation, I think we all are in that regard, so, and to, you know, help educate individuals when they approach us about and have these difficult conversations, usually with people that drive cars, so, anyway, or trucks, yes, pickup trucks. Okay, so I'll turn it back to you guys.
That's wonderful. Thank you very much for all of your insights today. We had, there were a couple of other questions that were on the memo, but I think we've touched on these and would encourage you to send any comments in on these if you would like to, to the team, just so we can keep on time for tonight. We did touch on first and last mile a little bit, I think the one we didn't really touch on too much was the automated connected electric vehicles, but the healthier travel choices we have touched on quite a bit. Yes?
The one thing I did write down that I forgot on the AT is we've got to comment somewhere in this plan how it is that by 2041, we've considered a disruptive technology within the AT space, specifically e-whatever, e-vehicle, e-scoot, e-bike, name your e-something, e-wheels, because that's going to be a big one, and it's important.
Thank you.
So thank you very much with respect to the time, I know that council is hoping to finish this up by 5 o'clock, and we're just approaching 5 o'clock now, so just thought I would touch on closing up and our next steps in the process. So we're just working with staff with regards to the Phase One deliverables, so we've put together the initial discussion papers, they've been circulated to city staff, we're just working on finalizing those as the foundation to move forward into our Phase Two work. We're well underway with the Phase Two technical work, especially, there's a series of 10 discussion papers, 11 discussion papers that we're working on, that we're working with city staff in terms of getting that information correct, and a lot of the input that you've given us today is going to be very helpful in terms of helping us craft those discussion papers and moving the comment forward. And then come later this year, we'll be working on the second round of community engagement, and our idea at that point in time is, we're looking at And our idea at that point in time is, we're looking at, as Susan mentioned earlier, we're looking at some public information centers. And what we would be doing at that time is presenting directions. So what we would be saying is, okay, this is what we're recommending around complete streets, this is what we're recommending around Vision Zero, this is what we're recommending for changes to the active transportation network, before we actually present a plan. So get, you know, get community involved, knowing where the thing is, where the plan is going, before we put a document and say, here, this is the document, take it or leave it. We want to get feedback on the directions of the plan before we actually craft the document, which is done in Phase Three. And then that'll be in the new year that we'll be bringing that forward. But our idea is to do like the heavy lifting on Phase Two this fall and get back to, get back to council with some further updates. So as we've mentioned a couple of times, certainly really welcome your feedback, if it may come after the session on any of the topics that we've discussed today. We will be providing a copy of the presentation to help refresh you on any of the comments or any of the discussion that we've had today. And with that, I'd like to thank you very much for your time today, and it was extremely valuable from our perspective. So thanks for your time, hope you enjoyed it as well.
Okay, thank you. On behalf of council, thank you, Jean and Susan, and I'd like to thank Chris and Phil and Christine and staff for being here all afternoon. Chris, did you want to make a comment?
Yes, thank you, Chevi. I just wanted to mention, we'll have to consult with clerks and our project team about some kind of timing to be able to gather this information for the document and how we do that. There's obviously a public process we have to follow and satisfy all those requirements, but we'll have a chat on that and get that information to council as soon as we can.
Okay, thank you. And councillor Bonagor, quickly. Sorry, I have one quick question for staff. With this beautiful logo that you have here, so Complete Streets and Vision Zero, it is all about the people. So I was wondering if we could just reorient all of those little icons, so it goes from people all the way up to buses? That's just one thing that I'd like to maybe think about. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we'll see everybody back here at 6:30 to continue this committee, the whole meeting. So have a good dinner, everybody.